Good evening. It's Tuesday, March 12th, 2019. It's 7:00 PM. We're in the council chambers of the city of Platteville, and I hereby call the meeting to order of the common council. We'll start with roll call, and I will note that our president is under the weather tonight.
Barb Stockhausen?
Here.
Sina Sharp?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Robin Klein?
Here.
Don Frances?
Here.
And Eileen Nichols is excused.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is a special presentation. The city of Platteville and partners have been involved in a housing study. Karen, do you want to make the introduction of our presenter?
No, I actually am going to defer to Joe for that.
Okay, Joe?
Yeah, as you mentioned, with cooperation with several community partners, the city began the effort of doing the housing study, housing needs analysis. We've been working on that for some time now. Hired Veer Becker to do the study, and it's basically available in draft form. But before it's finalized, we wanted to give some presentations and allow for some additional comment and feedback. So Josh Langen from Veer Becker is here to do the presentation.
Welcome, Josh. For those in the audience, Josh has a PowerPoint or a presentation on the screen behind you, obviously arranged for our advantage so we can see it, but that means you have to turn around to see it.
Hello. I speak pretty loud, so hopefully I can be heard easily. My name is Joshua Langen. I work for Veer Becker, and I'm going to be presenting a housing study this evening. Technology should work, yep, works great. So, a little bit of background here, we were hired in the spring of 2018, and we formed a subcommittee, a steering committee of some local leaders here in the community. You know, we wanted to get some community buy-in to the housing study. We had an online survey sent out using email and lists of some major employers here in town, had some paper surveys out at the library as well, so we collected a lot of data from the community. We talked to some stakeholders, professionals in the community, realtors and financial institution representatives, and I'll talk a little bit about that. We looked at some existing plans. We compiled a bunch of data, so we had some facts and figures to go by. Finally, we compiled everything into issues, opportunities, and some strategies to sort of address those issues and opportunities. It's a big housing study, and housing can be very comprehensive, so we wanted to go ahead and do a larger study, and we had to break it into components in order to best do that and to look at it from multiple different directions. We broke it into four chapters: municipal initiatives, basically overarching things that the city can do to really get the ball rolling; housing rehabilitation, just like it sounds, how to rehabilitate houses, put them back into working order; infill construction, new development; and then finally, an entire chapter devoted to funding. And then finally, we'll have some time for comments and questions, but that's basically our presentation today. Steering committees, city staff, industrial development representatives, Southwest Health, which was a good addition, and of course, the school district, because they have a vested interest in making sure we have adequate housing here in the city. The online survey I mentioned covered a whole range of topics: where do you live? Do you own? Do you rent? What kind of house? How old is it? Do you need repairs? Do you not need repairs? What's your income? How long you been employed here in the city? What are your preferences if you do want to buy? What would you like to see? So, we gathered a lot of data, and that's all in the report in an appendix, because it's a whole lot of it, and it's too much to present here in a slideshow. Stakeholders, I mentioned, we talked to realtors, landlords, builders, developers, financial institutions, people from the city, of course, university representatives, and then from economic development partners around the city as well. So, we got good, that was panels, two, three hours. We sat around the table with, you know, five, seven, eight people over a course of a couple of days and got their input. The housing market analysis is all that data I was talking about. We looked at everything from population growth, and we'll cover a little bit of this, households, school enrollment, income, renters versus owners, cost, vacancy, et cetera. Here's an example of some of the demographics and population figures. So, looking at growth from 2011 to 2016, that's available census data, that's why we're looking at those years. If you see the baby boomers, you know, those in the late 50s, early 60s are growing. Generation Y grew considerably, millennials. And then, you know, there seems to be a little bit of decline in Generation Z, the younger kids, you know, sort of 15 and younger, and it sort of appears that you do have an aging community, but I think there's some surprises in that. When you look at the graph underneath that, you know, actually, those under five did grow between 2011 and 2016. So, you may not have strong teenage growth, but you do have the toddlers, and they're going to need houses, they're going to need bedrooms at some point, and I think you'll see the next slide shows that in household size. So, we compared, in my area statistics, we compared Platteville to the counties, surrounding communities, the state, depending. You can see there that Platteville household size actually increased. So, household size is increasing in Platteville for a lot of reasons. It is the little kids, but it's also older family members moving back in, other relatives moving back in. It's basically some consolidation there. You have households with non-family and other family members living together. As you might imagine, this shows Platteville versus the county and the state, a little bit higher in the renter percentage than the owner percentage. That's due to, you know, the location of the university here, that's to be expected. But when you look at vacancy rates, they tell a little bit of a story down there at the bottom. From 2011 to 2016, you can see that homeowner vacancy rates dropped to essentially zero. So, at the time when this census survey was taken, the census struggled to find any available housing, and we did some spot analysis ourselves of available housing. Yeah, housing is really tough to find in Platteville, especially if you're looking for something move-in ready, or you have a particular house in mind, your choice is going to be a little limited, and that's one of the reasons why you have a housing study done, see if that can't be changed. However, if you look at rentals, the rental vacancy rate creeped up a little bit, so the rental market is starting to free up a little bit, I think, as the university built good quality additional dorm housing, some students having some more places to live, some landlords are getting older, and they're taking their rentals off the market, or, you know, converting those to for-sale homes. Now, when we look into the future, basically, almost every age group is going to grow except for the 50 to 64. So, you are going to have, 19 or less, you're going to have children, and you're going to have teenagers, but you're also going to have seniors. Those baby boomers are going to get to be 65 years and older, and you are going to have senior housing needs in this community for the next 10, 20 years. Overall population projection, overall, Platteville is going to grow, and that's a good thing, because some communities are not growing in the state, and it's good to see that this one is, and it's going to continue to do so. So, as I said, we came up with four distinct chapters to tackle this, and not only that, but we had some appendices which covered a lot of the data. We tried to put the interesting stuff, the qualitative interview stuff in the chapters, the solutions, and the goals, and the strategies, and then all those sort of maybe boring data, if you don't want to read that, it's in the appendices. Some people find it very interesting. Some people just want to get to the solution. So, we tried to organize data in the back, and then maybe the solutions towards the front of the document. So, you know, Chapter 1, Municipal Initiatives, you know, we had an overall goal for the chapter. It was, "Address current planning efforts, prepare the city to work with housing partners, complete objective strategies to enable the city to respond to the needs, and offer a range of housing types for a range of incomes." So, we're trying to really address everyone's needs in the community. We had a overall goal, we had objectives, and then we had strategies within the objectives. So, just looking at the objectives themselves, we came up with quite a few. This was ranked by the steering committee. We had a little bit of input as well from our opinion, and Priority 1 and 2 are going to be your high priorities, and 5 and 6 are going to be your low priorities. So, looking at some of these municipal objectives, want to allow for a multifamily attached housing in apartments in commercial districts. Right now, you do not. More and more apartments generate just as much tax revenue as commercial. They generate the same amount of traffic, but they generate traffic at opposite times, so you have opportunity for shared parking. More and more, we're seeing mixed use. We're seeing commercial and apartments right next to each other in the same district. We're seeing it all over the state. We think that would be a good solution for Platteville. Some medium priorities would be, you have a good land use plan, you have a good comprehensive plan, that's your overarching document. That could be changed a little bit to support your initiatives, and that's important to change, because when you go after funding, you want to make sure your comprehensive plan supports your housing plan, and you make sure your housing plan supports the initiatives you want to go after. Some lower priority stuff, historic district, maybe didn't need to be expanded to look at housing. Neighborhood planning, maybe Platteville isn't ready to engage in a full-on neighborhood planning program. It's a lot of work. Some more municipal objectives, smaller lots, more and more builders are struggling to afford to build, and one of the only ways they can cut costs is on the land cost. So, they're looking for smaller lots to try and offset some of their labor and materials costs. Coordination with professionals, once a year, sit down with the developers, invite them all, and have a roundtable and say, "This is what the city did this year for housing. What can you do for us?" And let's have a conversation. Some medium priorities, you know, you have a good development authority, redevelopment authority. There's plenty of opportunity there to do more things. And again, encourage developer participation in housing programs and in pursuing funding as well. So, here's, you know, some sample strategies that go through and explain how each objective is going to be achieved. There's a lot of them, and I think we came up with almost 40 or 50 strategies. So, we didn't want to go through every one of these tonight, but as I said, these are strategies that help support each of these objectives, and they're very specific. Sometimes, when you'll see in the document itself, there's also funding, responsibility, who's in charge? Who are your partners? Who can help you do this? What's the timeframe? How long is this going to take? So, this is an example of some specific strategies that'll help you contact the right people and help you sort of sort out, you know, what are some easy strategies you can accomplish now, what's some maybe you can do in medium and the long term. So, housing rehabilitation, Chapter Number 2. Goal: Provide direction assistance incentives to encourage rehabilitation of housing to satisfy existing and future housing demand. Housing rehabilitation, very important. That's why it's Chapter 2 and not Chapter 3. We deliberately put this as a higher priority. So, some of the objectives there, expand existing, establish additional home rehabilitation programs. You have a home rehabilitation program. It's good. You can expand it. Protect existing housing stock. And we'll probably look at a couple of these strategies as well here in the next few slides. Encourage home rehabilitation through acquisition of, you know, code violation and other methods of acquiring homes, and encouraging rehabilitation by the owner. Expand Main Street initiatives, and again, expand historic preservation initiatives. Oops. So, here's some examples. I'll want to go to, I guess that's the one I want to go to. There it is. So, this one's important, expand existing and establish additional home rehabilitation programs. We tried to organize this from easier strategies to more difficult strategies. So, to look at these in particular, as I mentioned, expand existing home-based rehabilitation fund with supplemental funding from various sources, HUD, USDA. Expand, build on what you have. Number 2, establish partnerships, provide supplemental funds, and seek funding for those with special needs. And it doesn't have to necessarily be income restricted, because you don't want all of your rehabilitation programs to be income restricted. And sometimes, there's money out there just for seniors, just for persons with disabilities, just for veterans that aren't necessarily income restricted. So, that could be a separate rehabilitation program in and of itself. Number 3, establish a home rehabilitation program that's really geared towards gaining as much funding as you can from various organizations, such as financial institutions that could invest to meet their CRA requirements. We're seeing this. Economic Development Administration, the EDA, has money. Redevelopment funds. The point of that one is that if you can get enough funding to show that you have good seed funds and good partners, you can go to your local employers, and that's why it's the last one in that, and say, "Look, we have a lot of people on board. Would you be willing to chip in to help fund a rehabilitation program so that your employees have somewhere to live?" Because they're starting to realize more and more that if they can't keep employees, if they can't attract employees, their business is in trouble. So, they are actually good housing partners, but they need to be shown that the city's serious, and they're generally not going to be the first ones to come up with money. And then finally, the last one here is a more complicated, something some of the larger cities are doing, to actually physically purchase homes and either resell them to flippers at a discount, or to get partners such as Habitat for Humanity and other partners in to take over the house, rehabilitate it, and then put it on the market. So, sort of goes from a little bit easier to a little bit more difficult strategies. Infill construction, new development. Platteville does have vacant land. You know, you're not boxed in by other communities. You do have some vacant land in the city and outside. You want to provide direction assistance incentives to encourage construction, to satisfy existing and future housing demand, for a range of housing types and income by increasing supply of buildable sites, affordability of land development, and increase your market exposure to potential builders. And all those are very important little phrases within that goal, and we'll see those spelled out here. One thing we looked at is we paid attention to your current land use plan, and, apologies. Basically, we see the vacant land is down there in the southeast, and it's, you do have residential land behind the shopping center, you do have some commercial space. You have a very large manufacturing, land use district, and you have a very large mixed use district. So, we read the plan, and it supported mixed use, and that would be townhomes next to small-scale shopping, next to apartments, next to perhaps single-family housing, all within one walkable community. So, we thought the land use plan really had some good things to say about that, so we encouraged that for the city of Platteville as well to perhaps come up with a district, because right now, you don't really have a zoning district that can achieve all the things that the land use plan wants you to achieve in that purple area down at the The objectives for new and infill housing all came up in medium. They weren't the top of the list. Rehabilitation was really kind of the top of the list. Obviously, looking for funding and other municipal initiatives were at the top of the list. So, construction, new development is important, and we talked about site preparation. You know, there's some things you can do to get some of your sites sort of pre-qualified, and have preliminary assessments so that when developers come to town, they have fewer questions about some of these sites. You can directly provide some improvements, maybe some grants and some loans to put in some infrastructure. You can acquire land through various methods and from various funding sources. So, these objectives basically deal with that, how to acquire and prepare, or just even advertise the land you have better to seek developer interest. Here's, again, some strategies to achieve each of these objectives, and we talked about some environmental assessment, maybe even remediation if necessary. We looked at extending water sewer. And again, here, similar to rehabilitation, in terms of infill and even new housing developments, we started with some simpler strategies and worked our way up to some more difficult ones. We started with, that's not the right slide, that's the right slide. We started with purchasing small vacant land and then selling it, or just gathering it and eventually attracting development to smaller property. We talked about larger property that's ready to go, and the city's had some success doing that. The city has put together some rather sophisticated real estate deals to promote, you know, medium density and high-density housing in the city, so we encourage more of that. Eventually, you could get to a point where, again, you're buying land and selling it to a developer at a reduced rate to keep their costs down, with the promises that they will build a range of housing that you're actually looking for. That could be market rate, but that could also be housing for seniors, that could also be housing for, you know, workforce housing, for people who are maybe on one income. You know, we talked to the university, I'm sorry, I keep grabbing that when I'm trying to, there we go. We talked to the university, and it's not just the students they have housing needs for, they have needing for their staff, their professors, they have housing needs for their, you know, maintenance staff as well. So, they have a whole range of housing needs, and so we felt encouraging, and we heard this from a lot of people, encouraging developments that have a range of housing types is important, not just a single-family subdivision, and maybe not just an apartment complex, but developments that have a range, and that maybe if you buy an apartment complex, at some point, you'll move up to a townhome, and then maybe at some point, you move up to a single-family home, or condo, or something like that. So, how do we pay for all this? We did put together a chapter devoted to funding initiatives. So, the goal there was encourage greater current and future utilization of local, state, federal, and other housing-related funding programs. You want to encourage rehabilitation, construction projects that result in affordable housing stock, and provide financial assistance to potential buyers, renters, and renovators as well. So, that was the overall goal. We looked at some of the mapping that federal and state programs use to delineate areas that qualify for funding, and we overlapped a lot of these maps to create a funding district map. And the plan explains each of these districts in terms of which federal funding these districts might be eligible for. That could be HUD, which is Housing and Urban Development, that could be the Economic Development Administration, that could be, you know, the new tax law, created opportunity zones as tax shelters for wealthy investors. You have one. We put that in there, so, and some of them overlap. So, we felt it was important to have this map to show that should the city, you know, expand development districts, create a community development corporation, create an area for investment, it could go ahead and use this map to line up the boundaries of the new district to see that, you know, funding might be a little bit easier to get if they are better aligned with state and federal funding districts. So, a range of priorities, high, medium, and low. Expand access to funding that's already out there, and some of which you use already. You do use CDBG program funding, but there's more you could be utilizing. There's grants you could go after. More and more communities are combining HUD and, rather, HUD Home Funds and CDBG Funds. CDBG can be used to acquire property, and HUD Home Funds can be used to construct houses on that property. So, we're seeing more and more combination of funds nowadays. Getting a project built sometimes can use 10 different funding sources. So, we try to encourage mix and match as much as possible. Expand, you know, the redevelopment authority and Main Street and other entities you have Tax increment financing is always a possibility. Create community development corporations. They can access funding that sometimes, you know, cities themselves cannot. Work with your regional planning commission. You know, they put together housing studies, I believe they're putting together one now. They are very good at finding funding as well, and so just getting on their radar and giving them a copy of this study will really help them plan and, you know, create their goals for housing in the region, and hopefully put you at the top of the list as compared to another community that might not be as prepared. So, this chapter is actually pretty long and has the most strategies in it. Again, we were trying to find this community as many funding sources as possible, and some are easy, some are not so easy. For instance, the top strategy is if you do manage to get HUD Home funding, and there's three ways to do that, apply directly, go through a partner organization, or form a consortium with neighboring counties, you can do something simple like apply for tenant-based rental assistance, which will help the people on your housing voucher program while they're on the waiting list. Easy to administer, probably the easiest HUD program there is. It helps out what you've already got, it helps out with what you're already doing. And there's more examples here, expanding access to HUD Home program funding. Who are the organizations that can help you do this? What are the acronyms you need to know? How do you get access to this program, to this program funding? Like I said, we tried to get real technical, so, you know, you look at things like Certified Community Development Entity, you know, that's a specific type of designation you need to get in order to access new market tax credits. Some details like that are in here to really help you when you sit down to pursue funding, you'll know all the language and all the jargon already. And the list just goes on and on. So, like I said, it's as comprehensive as we could possibly make it. So, that is essentially my presentation, because I want to leave some time for questions.
Okay, questions for Josh. Josh, this is the third time I've seen the presentation.
I know. I apologize.
So, I'm starting to now kind of have an understanding. For some of the people up here, it's the first time they've seen the presentation, so it's kind of overwhelming the first time.
It is.
Questions?
Well, I have a couple of questions. Can you understand me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, my first question pertains to rental inspection. Platteville used to have a rental inspection program, and that was taken away by the state. And you have in here a recommendation that says aggressively enforce existing city codes. What can you give, or what cities can you give that are success stories as far as enforcement of codes as far as rental inspection?
The bigger cities are having to do that. Green Bay, Milwaukee, even Wausau, they're having to combine, they're using their code enforcement as an excuse to find funding. So, it's not necessarily they're becoming more code enforcement oriented, it's that they use it as data when they go to apply for funding. However, your point is well-taken, because, for instance, the city of Waukesha has backed off of code enforcement, because it turned into more problems than it was worth, because they couldn't quite get the funding they were looking for with that approach. So, it's not necessarily the best approach, but we thought we would put it in there anyway, because you're right, you can have real mixed success with overdoing your code enforcement.
My next question pertains to a comment about a mix of commercial and residential. What would be the appearance of a mix of commercial and residential?
What would be the appearance?
What would be the appearance of a development of commercial and residential? Are we talking about big box, and then some residential with that? Were you talking about small businesses, and then residential with small business? What do you mean by a mix?
Well, a mix can be anything, but with regards to what's practical at this point, you have commercial, and you have some residential, you know, in the newer parts of town. One way to look at housing as commercial itself, because, for instance, assisted living and some senior living, some apartments are actually commercial, and sometimes they need support services, and sometimes medium-density, high-density apartment buildings and such, condos, need ground-floor residential to spread their, or ground-floor commercial to spread their risks. So, when we're talking commercial, we're probably talking, you know, a for-profit gym or coffee shop below or coffee shop below a mixed-use building or a new condo building or something that would support a senior living assisted facility and that sort of thing. So no, I don't think we're talking about building, you know, the Wizard of Oz here. I think we're really trying to build small, smart, compact communities near the hospital and we can take advantage of federal funding because they employ people. And that's the great thing about some of these fundings such as assisted living is you could, you could apply for jobs from the state saying, we're creating jobs, so please fund us, but you're also applying for housing funding because you're also creating housing. So that's kind of where I see the synergy more so than big box or something like that. You have big box.
Getting down to a particular example, Keystone Estates is located in the back of Menards and Walmart. How would you increase the desirability of these lots? These lots already have water and sewer and streets developed. And the development at Keystone Estates has been slow. So how would you encourage people to build in this area? I think we have about four or five houses built out there at the present time. Would you put in trees and shrubs to shade or screen out the back of buildings? What would you do to encourage development out there?
The, the two main things you can do is, and we did discuss this. One thing is loosen up any zoning restrictions. Take a look at the PUD and perhaps consider smaller lots. Perhaps consider allowing for a different type of product out there. That, that's something the city wants to look at to see if they can get more flexibility out of the current planned development district out there. Secondly, success breeds success. If you can build more, you know, smaller starter families, senior mixed-income housing type, housing in that area, those people will graduate at some point and also start looking at other options. It seems a little isolated out there, so making, increasing the vibrancy, increasing the development, increasing the activity in that area will help those lots. Because while they're looking at maybe a town home that you may build near that area, they may say, you know what, I actually don't want a town home. I like it out here, but there are lots out here. So they may go look at same, single-family lots. So it's going to have to be two things. You're going to have to find a way to get smaller lots out there and different housing types, and you're going to have to build near that area just to encourage general activity.
And you gave examples of various developments. And my question is, why wasn't, I don't believe you included Prairie View. Prairie View, the developer was here one time and said that he has developed roughly $30 million at Prairie View. And that did not receive much in the way of development money from the City of Plattville. Also, he was a developer for Is Oak Haven, so.
Well, the housing market is changing rapidly and we had a number of builders and developers on our steering committee panels and they're saying, things are just different than even from a year ago, much less two or three years ago. Costs have gone up substantially. Not only is it a lack of labor, they're, you know, from the trades all the way to the construction, the material is going up as well. Cost of land has gone up, so they're, they're struggling to, they've flat out told us that we can no longer just build market rate without some sort of assistance, especially single-family homes. It's just getting harder and harder to do. So, you know, we, we realize that there's been some success in the community, but we still feel like Plattville could, you know, look at some other ways to spur additional interest from existing developers and new developers. Plus, some of them are retiring and they told us flat out, yeah, we're just tired of doing it. We're getting older and we don't want to do it anymore. We enjoyed our career and we're going to do something else.
I'll pass this down to you. It's a few things from my reading of the document. These are suggested changes. One of the hardest parts to read as far as the headings was on chapter 119, that page, 120, and then 214, 310, 311. You have a list of words there on blue background, very difficult to read. One day I was sitting there reading them in full daylight, but that's rather hard on the eyes doing that. And then I have a few examples of misspellings. You can look at those. One is very prominent there. Next, Appendix A was mislabeled. It was labeled, half the pages were, half the pages were labeled Appendix B and half Appendix A. So that needs to be changed. And then there's a missing figure. Some of the headings are missing for your figures and tables. And let's see, I guess that's about it. I have some typos down there at the bottom. So this is for your use. My suggestion is that you get somebody that hasn't read this before to read it.
Yeah, we still have the word draft stamped on it for a reason and, yeah, we're, we understand we have to go through it again and with a fine tooth comb. We understand it.
Other questions?
Well, I feel like your presentation helps me with this question a fair amount, but I will give you a bad question, I think. Just put it here. I, I've heard many times over, the city is not a Realtor. Why do they get so involved in these things? So I'm just wondering from your perspective if you would like to help me with that explanation or response.
Well, we, we try to get cities to not be Realtors. In making sure you, like, that's why we have sort of the annual roundtable as a strategy with the developers and local partners. Because there, there are partners that want to do work in here and they're just, they're not sure if, if, you know, they're going to have the amount of enthusiasm. They're not sure if they're going to have the amount of interest they want. Communication's important. It's not being a Realtor. It's just communicating. Bringing people together. We've had these in this study and other studies where just getting certain people in the room is an important thing. Our financial institution people just start talking to each other and I just kind of showed up and backed off because they were exchanging strategies and, oh, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? Same with the Realtors. Sometimes just getting people in the same room will produce results. That and just looking at some of, you know, basic preliminary site analysis on some of these, just to give a developer a basic idea of what he's getting into. And then zoning changes. Nobody wants to go through a rezoning. Sometimes, some people say it's hard. Some people, you know, claim it's easy, but basically nobody wants to go through one. So more flexibility in your zoning code really helps. So we feel like there's things you can do without becoming a Realtor and we try to put those in there as well.
Thank you.
Other questions from council members?
Well, I'm wondering where the money's going to come from. Talk about time meter for staff. So is this going to mean the addition of more staff? That's my first question. And as far as you mentioned some of these other costs, where are they going to come from? Give the example of one development that the city is working on and that's Pioneer Ford, Ruxton Apartments, I guess they call them. The city, et cetera, and others gave that land to the developer for $1. And the city put in quite a bit of money, half a million dollars at least, I believe, from TIF money. And the city also gave a loan to the developer, 1.3 million, which that loan will not be paid off until about 2035. There's only going to be about 5,300 feet of retail developed so that there's not much income coming back to the city on this particular project unless you want to start talking about the 10 or 11 market rate apartments that will be paying taxes. So I wonder, you know, we can't afford to, in my opinion, do such type of development as far as funding.
Well, like I said, we did focus on funding as much as we possibly could and we do understand that the city has had success in building low-income housing and that we really didn't focus necessarily on low-income housing. We did try to focus on workforce housing. That's why priming the pump to get employer-based rehabilitation funding was a strategy we put in there. We tried to show the overlap of a lot of funding and we tried to point you towards bigger funding pots such as Economic Development Administration that has a lot of available funds. It's just hard to get to, but you've got to go through your Regional Planning Commission to get to it and they can put you on the list. And when you become involved with them, we feel like that's, you know, worth going after. With regards to your first question, hiring staff, it kind of depends. I mean, I think if you go through this and find the easy stuff first, you won't have to hire, hire staff. Then if you can get some early successes, then you may feel the need to add staff to go after some of the more difficult money.
Okay. Other council people with questions? Joe or Karen, would you describe what the next steps are now for us relative to this study?
So I think our next step would be, once the plan is officially accepted by the council, that we'll prioritize even further from the prioritization that Rebecca has done in terms of what we think it makes most sense to tackle in connection with the common council. We do have TID 4 that's closing. And if we wanted to extend that for an additional year to put that towards housing, we have to have a plan in place by November.
And so one could say that the next time we'll see this, it would come on our agenda for approval? I mean, and I'm not saying next time. Is that, are we expect, I mean, you said, once the council accepts it.
I, I think that's, in effect, I think it will come back and they'll make any further adjustments. And then would we bring, I think we would probably bring it back for official acceptance.
And then this would be, this study would then be used as a guide as we do our strategic planning and our planning for next year.
Correct. Yes, and we'll be about to embark on another three-year strategic plan.
So that's where it would inform that strategic plan, which is one of the reasons we did it. Okay. Thank you, Josh. I don't hear any other questions, so thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
There is a copy of the housing study on the city's website. And Joe, did we get a copy in the library or not?
I have not put a paper copy in there. I was waiting for the final.
Okay, so the final copy we will provide to the library, but in the meantime, there is a, the PDF is on the city website. All right, let's move along on our agenda then. The next item on our agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Indicate if you would prefer just separate discussion or action on any of these. We have the council minutes from February 26th, regular meeting. We have payment of bills. We have the financial report for February. There are no appointments to boards or commissions. And we have licenses, a temporary B, Class B to serve fermented malt beverages and wine at the upcoming Saturday, April 13th, loud at the library event. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve. Yeah, I move to approve it. Sorry.
Motion by Sina and seconded by Ken to approve the consent agenda as presented. We'll vote.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on our agenda is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions if any. And I do have a person in our midst tonight who has asked to speak at this time. And so I would invite Kerry Kelleher to the podium. Kerry represents a new business in town.
Thank you. My name's Kerry Kelleher and I work for a company called Aggrace Hospice. And we, our business is that we take care of people at end of life. It's, the company is a nonprofit company. It's celebrating 41 years in doing this business. We started in Madison and in a church basement with two volunteers and one nurse. And 41 years later, we're in 23 counties, two states, serving about 900 people a day. So we're privileged to be able to do that. We have just, in the last couple of months, moved into Plattville. We have an office that we had a fun party at today, a ribbon-cutting party at Park Place over on Elm Street. So one of the things that Aggrace does when they do expansions is that they really spend time studying the area. And we don't, we don't want to just move into an area, gain referrals, make money. We want to become part of the community. So we really took the time to kind of study Plattville, Arlington, Fenimore, Lancaster. And we learned that this area is underserved with people at end of life. So that's one of the reasons we're here. Took us about a year to get the numbers and figure it out and come down. We've done many road trips down here, studying, asking, talking to hospitals. We do have a contract with your local hospital, Southwest Health Center. They're important partners with us when it comes to taking care of people who are ill and people at end of life. The other thing we do is we create what we call an engagement committee. And that's where I met Barbara Dos. And we get people in the community to meet with us once a month and we learn about what's important to the folks who live here. What's the history of this community? What would matter to you and us working together? And so once a month, this great group of people get together. We, we learn from you and we put together a team and care that matters to this area and meets the people's needs. So we are here. We are just starting out. We have, we did this up in the Baraboo-Reedsburg area, an expansion, and we started with a couple nurses and we now serve in that area 120 patients. We have a team hiring local people of between 35 and 40 people. So we're glad to be here. We're grateful to be here. We're starting with a few nurses, the people we need to take care of people. But as discussed today, we are here to stay and we want to have people who live here work for us. So those of you who are in college, just saying, we, you know, we use nursing assistants, social workers, nurses, nurse practitioners, physicians. So we will be hiring from this community and it's very important to us to be here and to work together. So we're glad to be here and thank you for the time.
And I think all council people have a brochure on your desk. All right. That was the only person I had registered under that item. So let's go on to reports. The reports in your packet were the Housing Authority Board. Councilor Killian, anything to add?
No addition.
Plan Commission, that would be me and Eileen, nothing to add. Historic Preservation Commission?
No addition.
The other reports in the packet were the Water and Sewer Financial Report, the Airport Financial Report, and the Department Progress Reports. Any questions or comments on any of those?
I have a couple of questions under Department Progress. The first one may be answered by the city manager. And I believe I saw something about April 1. Is that the date as far as going out for proposals? Could you, for remodeling of the city hall? April 1?
Yep, yes, it is.
It is?
That's what Howard is telling me, yes.
Okay, and then who's, who's, who's in charge of that as far as putting out information?
Delta 3 is actually putting together.
That's Delta 3.
Delta 3 is actually putting together the proposals.
That's Delta 3. Okay. So, you've made up the plan as far as now...is it possible to see that plan that's going out?
It's not finalized yet.
It's not finalized. I would like to have a copy of the plan. Would it be available yet by this Thursday?
I don't believe so. I think...
We're meeting on Thursday. So, you have seen the plan, because we've reviewed the plan with the council during a work session, and then again during the budget process. So, what Delta 3 has been working on is the detailed plan with respect to finishes and the actual construction.
Yes, I would like to see the plan. So, how soon will that be available? I want to see it to show it to Historic Preservation Commission.
So, we're meeting on Thursday. Shortly thereafter, it should be...it should be available.
Okay.
I would note that it has received...it was reviewed by the state Historic Preservation Office.
Yes. But as far as review, we've not seen anything formal as far as written document. Okay, that's one question. My other question comes up in relation to the library and the noise problem. Is that nearing completion as far as being done with? Or you had about one line or two lines in your report? What is...what is the timeline to get this done?
Yep. This has been a process. So, as you...as you probably remember, we had raised the concern with NCI, the construction company. And their initial solution with respect to this was to install some sound baffles. And it took quite a while to get that done. And when they were installed, we didn't feel that fully resolved the problem. So, we're now in the process of getting a quote for a second change, which would lift the RTUs off of the roof and provide an isolation bumper. And we're hopeful that that will solve the problem, and we're just kind of waiting for the problem.
There were three main parts. One was the meeting room. Is that solved?
No, that's the one we're still working on.
And then the children's area?
The children's area was not a concern for us.
And then the third one was the roof, because that's being worked on.
The roof was not a sound issue. So, we do have one issue that they are still working on with the roof that I think has to do with insulation of some lines that Dave Jones is aware of, and they intend to fix during the spring. The weather just isn't too conducive to fixing it right now.
Okay, so it's not a sound issue?
No.
They're not addressing anything on that? I did receive a complaint on that, so I was curious as to whether anything was being done.
A complaint on...
Okay, thank you.
A complaint on the noise in the community room or a complaint on...
The roof. The noise from the compressor on the roof.
And that perhaps was related to the community room.
All right. Any other questions on reports? If not, we'll move along on the agenda then to our action items. The first item on our agenda is a conditional use permit for an intensive home occupation at 345 Bailey Avenue. This was tabled at the last meeting. Oh, do you have...
Yeah, sorry. I was supposed to...
You can't talk from there.
On a microphone.
You were supposed to...Candace, would you? Okay. And I should have announced that if you want to speak, you have to fill out a little green sheet, so...sorry. So, we'll take a little breather, because we have...and as he finishes that, he can just drop it with me. That's fine. So, we'll move back here to citizens' comments. All right. And you can just go right to the microphone then.
Sorry about that. I apologize. I was here before the paper sheets got there. But my name's Patrick Nate. I'm the music director for Fine Mule for Symphonia on campus at UW-Platteville. And I would like to officially announce that our chapter is hosting our second annual Battle of the Bands on April 6. That's a Saturday. We already went through the appropriate procedure for outside amplification through the university, and I was told to come and present that to the city council tonight. Are there any questions?
So, is your Battle of the Bands on campus?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's an on-campus event?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Sorry about that again.
Now, we'll move on to the action part of our agenda. As I said, conditional use permitted, intensive home occupation, 345 Bailey Avenue. This was tabled at the last meeting. So, I believe the first item has to be to move it off the table, according to Robert's Rules of Order.
Yes. I moved it off the table.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move this off the table for discussion. We'll vote.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So, Joe?
So, just as a little recap, the owner of the property at 345 Bailey Avenue applied for a kennel license with the city and received...
Just a minute. What kind of a kennel license?
I'll get there. He received the kennel license. Basically, in Platteville, anybody who desires to have more than four dogs on their property requires to have a kennel license. Essentially, there's a private kennel and a business kennel license. He initially applied for the kennel license, and during that process realized...he realized and we realized that in addition to the private kennel license, he needed to also have a business kennel license. So, he did, as part of the...just the basic kennel license for private, for your own dogs, there is a kind of a simple inspection procedure. The building inspector, the veterinarian, and the county health inspector look at the property, where they're going to keep the dogs, et cetera, and make sure they meet some of the basic standards. He had met those requirements, so he did receive his license. So, he is allowed to have more than four dogs on his property of his own ownership, of his own dogs. But in addition to that, he would like to sell the puppies that he would have from his dogs, and he would also like to provide boarding services on the property for other people's dogs. So, that kind of pushes into the realm of it's basically it's a business, has a business occupation at that location. So, under the city's regulations, that falls under the conditional use permit, has an intensive home occupation. So, he's got to go through the approval process, which he has started that. So, it got through the Plan Commission, the council, and the reason it was tabled last time is due to the nature of that home occupation with the dogs. They do have to be outdoors, at least on certain occasions, for the well-being of the dogs. There is a provision in our zoning ordinance that does not allow home occupations to have an exterior component or exterior activity. It's got to be conducted inside the structure. So, even though I think there was some interest on the behalf of the council to pursue this boarding kennel, we basically have an issue that our ordinance, as it stands now, does not allow that to take place. So, the council tabled that issue at the last meeting to give staff a little bit time to kind of analyze how we need to proceed on this. So, we did confer with city attorney in more detail. And basically, if you no longer have any desire to see that kennel, boarding kennel at that location, then you just vote to deny the conditional use permit, and it basically stops at that point. If there is still some interest on the behalf of the council to pursue this as an option on that property, then we would need to amend our zoning ordinance to allow home occupations to have an exterior activity or an exterior component. So, just as kind of a starting point, I did include in your packet an example of how we could...one way we could go about doing that, and I did some research with some other communities and did find a few examples where they...they basically...we have two types of home occupations, and they added a third type, which does allow kind of an exterior activity, and there's some additional standards and requirements that would be built into the process, the review process, the approval process as part of that. And one example is the...both of the communities that I used as a guide had a basically a built-in sunset provision as part of a, what they call a Type 3 home occupation of the exterior. So, one of them had expired after one year, and then the other one expired after two years. So, that's just part of the process, that there's always the ability to review it again and go through it. So, I included that just to give you an idea of one approach that we could take if you decide to go down that road. So, if you decide to do that, we would obviously have to amend our ordinance, and there's a legal process that we've got to go through to do that. So, it'd be referred back to staff. We would continue to work on the ordinance. Then it would go to the Plan Commission. They would have their input, and then it would come back to the council following the public hearing, and then you could take action at that point. So, basically, tonight, you've got two options really, is one is to vote to deny the conditional use permit, and as I mentioned, it would stop at that point. Or if you would desire to pursue this further, then you would direct staff to continue work on amending the zoning ordinance.
Okay, but in the interim, there is no permit?
Correct. We can't...with the ordinance we have in place now, you really can't approve this particular conditional use permit. So, basically, you'd have to table it again until that ordinance was revised.
Okay. So, help me review again the whole issue of animals in homes. If you have four or less animals, or if you have less than four animals, you don't need a license of any type.
You would not need the kennel license for that situation.
And does it...I mean, cats, dogs? I mean, is it all...is a kennel license only applicable to dogs, or is it applicable to any animal?
In my experience, it's only been when we're dealing with dogs.
All right. So, the kennel license deals with dogs. So, if I now have three dogs and I go to a fourth dog, what do I have? I have two.
You can have four if you go more than four dogs.
If I have four dogs, I go to five dogs.
Right.
I just want to get kind of in my mind and in everyone's mind what I have to do. And then, when I go to five dogs, what requirements do I have?
You would apply for a license. There's some...
And how long is a license good for?
It's an annual license.
So, it's a one-year license?
Right.
Okay?
And as I mentioned, there are some fairly simple standards in the code, distance where the animal...dogs would be kept from adjacent residential structure, fencing requirements, some screening requirements. I don't remember the rest of them. That's all that...the building inspection part of it.
Building inspector has to come?
The building inspector reviews it, the veterinarian has to inspect it, and the county health inspector.
The county health inspector has to come. And that's just if I have five dogs, and I can have from five to 10 dogs with my private kennel license that's good for one year.
Right.
And then every year I have to come back and redo it? Every year then do I have to have the building inspector, the veterinarian, and the county health inspector?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a annual...that's an annual expense if I have more than...if I have five to 10 dogs, end of the story. Okay? And now, the third level here is trying to get a business kennel license.
Right. So, the other part of it, whether it was...is a boarding kennel or some other type of a business, our ordinance allows for some business activities in a home. We have kind of a standard or customary home occupation, which basically it's, you know, an internet-based business, consulting, whatever. It's all done over the phone.
Real estate, whatever.
Mail, whatever. There's no customers coming to that property as part of the business. There's no retail sales or anything like that. So, that type of a home occupation is permitted in a residential areas. We don't need to approve it. It's very straightforward. Then there's what we call an intensive home occupation. So, that's when you do have either outside employees that don't live there that come to the property for that business, or the customers have to come to the property on a regular basis to conduct that business. So, that becomes intensive. That has to be approved as a conditional use permit.
And either of those two home occupation categories, as our attorney pointed out last meeting, our current ordinance requires that those be conducted inside the home.
Right. In a portion of the residence. The residential use still has to be primary. The home occupation has to be secondary, and there's a limit on how much of the structure, but it has to be within the structure. So, that was the limit that we hit with this situation, because with the dogs, you have to have them outdoors for exercise, et cetera. That without doing that would be inhumane for the animals, and so it bumps up against our existing ordinance.
Okay. Does anybody have a question on the levels of kennel license and the difference? And, oh, the intensive...so, the business kennel license, would that also have to be renewed every year?
Yes.
The private kennel license has to be renewed.
Right.
The business kennel license would also have to be renewed on an annual basis again with the building inspector, the vet, and all of those people coming.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure everybody understands. Any questions of Joe before we proceed? I have four people...three people who have asked to speak. Okay. The first person I have would like to speak in favor, Dan.
My name is Dan Winch, 345 Bailey Avenue. I'm the owner, the one who's looking to do this. Obviously, you guys know. I didn't prepare anything special this week for you guys. I think we've pretty much covered it all already. I mean, we know that the community as a whole seems to generally be in support of this. I know we've got a lot of support from council this last meeting. We've seen that a lot of good things have been happening. I guess from what I was picking up in the earlier presentation, I have a couple comments to go on here. One of the things that was presented, and well, he doesn't appear to be here anymore, but was that a commercial and residential mix was strongly pushed by the land use plan that we just heard about. And so, this is actually one way we could actually, right away, start working toward what that plan was. He also suggested amending zoning ordinances to allow more uses, and this would be another example of using the plan that we, as a city, paid to gather. And I guess the other thing that I'd like to bring up is there's actually been a study. It was actually on a Market Watch article that I had read not too long ago. It said that the number one reason why millennials or, you know, whatnot are buying homes right now is for the...for having dogs. That is the number one driver of why people are...younger people, I guess I should say, are purchasing homes. And so, I mean, this is an example of how we can have that available right here in town and how we might even be able to work towards what the housing study we just showed to go towards that. Don't we have a lot of extra stuff to present this time? It's just it's real important to me and my family that we are able to continue doing this, and I would like to stress that we are not looking to increase the number of dogs at this location. We already have our kennel license. What we are looking to do is to breed them and sell them in our home. And from my understanding, breeding them is not a commercial activity. Selling them is a commercial activity. So, we are not looking to increase the number of dogs. We're just looking to sell the puppies out of our home and to be able to board other dogs. And I guess...can I answer any other questions? Okay. Aminel?
Okay, we have Jeff Sisley, who has registered to speak against.
Okay, we have Jeff Sisley, who has registered to speak against. Then Jeff, your name and your address, please.
Okay, I live at 295 South Court Street. We live about a half a block from down right up the alley. And I've been in Platteville for 28 years. Couple more years before that, we rented a place, but we've owned our house for 28 years. We've had dogs. I've owned Labradors for 35 years. I like dogs. I love dogs. The only problem that I've got with the whole thing, if you want to breed dogs and sell them, I don't have a real problem with that as long as the noise level is kept down. When you open a commercial facility to bring other dogs in, and I've been around this all my life, you don't know these dogs, they don't know you, and they're going to bark. And it's going to be a constant barking problem. And you're not going to be able to quiet them down because their owner isn't there. They're going to be with you and your care is going to be there while they're there. I do not want a whole bunch of problems with the barking. And I've had problems from down in your area before. This has been a year or two ago where the dogs are barking for well over an hour. And at that point, I called Mr. McKinley's Police Department, had him come down to try to shut it down. That's the only time I've ever had a problem. I think you and your wife were up to my property like last August, trying to find out who voiced another complaint with the police department. It was not me and I told you to go door to door to find out who did it. I just do not want a commercial facility in the neighborhood. It's a noise problem. It's a property value problem. You've got excrement from the dogs having to go to the bathroom. You're going to have a smell problem. I guess I just, I don't want the noise problem, Dan, and that's the reason I came here. Lonnie Holtz is a very good friend of mine. He owns a, he owns a rental house right across from you. He's not here tonight because he's on a vacation and wasn't able to be here. He is not in favor of this either. I know he'd have to come and voice his own. I guess I can't do it for him, but I'm just telling you that he's not in favor of it. I think if you strongly want to pursue this, that you need to have people go around the neighborhood and do an actual poll of people and find out what they feel about it. Because they're going to have to put up with the noise just like I am, and I'm not going to put up with it. If you keep it, if it's noisy, I'm going to be calling them and they're going to be coming down to see you. So that's the only reason I wanted to talk about this. And I guess I'll leave it at that. I don't need to be long-winded about it, but I just don't want the noise problem, Dan, and that's the only reason. And I know dogs and I know what they're going to do. I've been around kennels before. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sisley. Mike Osterholz has registered to speak against.
Good evening. Mike Osterholz, 555 North Chestnut Street here in Platteville. Here we are again. Kind of echoing a little bit of what the gentleman before me had to say and probably repeating a little bit of the stuff I commented on last week. I am speaking out against this. I do own a rental property in the area, several actually. A lot of what you said, sir, I agreed with. I mentioned last week. Not saying that there aren't people in favor of it, but I have spoken to many people that do live in the neighborhood that could not be here tonight, that either live in the neighborhood or have rental properties in the neighborhood. I'm not sure what the ordinance is for notification, Joe, for how close they need to be to the property to get notified that it's going on.
For, for the conditional use permit, I believe it's 100 feet.
Okay, 100 feet isn't very far if you think about that. There are plenty of neighbors that didn't even know this was going on. And when I informed them that it was, they, their first reaction was kind of a, that will never happen, so I'm not too worried about it type response. But when they did find out that it was tabled and brought to a second thing, they did express concern. Many of them couldn't be here tonight for the same reason, vacation or other things going on. I know a couple of them may have reached out to the council or the city manager or Joe possibly. So I do agree that if this is something the council does want to move forward with, there should be a little bit more expansion, expansive, like market data done just to find out what does the neighborhood truly think? Because basically right now, you're looking at like five of the closest neighbors that were notified and basically nobody else knows what's going on other than if they read city council minutes or watched the meeting or anything like that. One of my concerns also with this is it kind of sets a precedent. If we let this happen now, is it going to continuously happen? If it sets a precedent, doesn't mean it can happen all the time, not just in this neighborhood, but any neighborhood in town? I guess where does it stop and where does it stop? I know people like having chickens. Are we going to start having expansive chicken operations in the back of our houses? Or alpaca or anything else? I'm not meaning to say that mockingly. I'm just saying this is kind of opening Pandora's box of what, what are we going to keep allowing and where do we push that threshold and where does it stop? I know we talked about this last meeting too. How is this going to be enforced? I know you said, sir, that you had called a complaint one time. I, I love dogs. I have dogs of my own. I have neighbors that have some of the loudest, most horrible dogs ever. And I've made many complaints on them. And as the city attorney said last week, a lot of times the police department tries to go out of their way to not issue a ticket, make things right, make everybody happy. And in many cases, you know, truly with the incident or the issue is, really doesn't get brought to light until everybody is super POed. And then one of the last things I want to say is like, Joe may correct me here and I may be out of bounds, but in my mind, a conditional use permit for a property that's asked to being, have the zoning changed for any reason, a lot of times would be for like a property that's an older property that maybe had a neighborhood grow around it, that the property, original use can't be used anymore and it needs to be rezoned for a commercial building into apartments or something like that. So the building has a usage or the property has a usage. Or if it's an old barn behind a house that was maybe the original farmstead for the property that's being converted into a kennel or something along those lines. That makes sense from a conditional use permit because you're actually using what's, what's there and you're trying to make it better for the neighborhood and for the community. In this case, none of those things are really happening. It's, it's a gentleman that I'm sure with very, very good intentions is just trying to open a business in his home that is not ideally set up for it and neither is the neighborhood. And I think that's something we need to think about when we're looking at how conditional permitting works, not just, it sounds like a good idea, let's do it. And I guess that's really all I have to say unless somebody has any questions for me. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Oster. No, I think we'll, we'll just leave. You, you spoke, they spoke. This isn't a public hearing. First of all, I have any council, council discussion though.
So I just keep hearing about the boarding being like the issue. Is the, the actual breeding and selling of the puppies the issue? Or is it the boarding that's making people most upset? So I'm trying to get to the conclusion. Also, if we were going to have like, could they sell the puppies out of their house and get the conditional use permit without boarding the dogs? Would that be an option?
Joe?
I, I do think that would be an option if you wanted to approve that.
So you could.
I mean, I haven't had any residents contact me directly, other than Mr. Osterholz who already mentioned that. But I think at the, to summarize some of the conversation at the plan commission meeting, I think some of those members, either during the meeting or afterwards, did say that their primary concern was the boarding of the dogs, not the puppies.
To clarify that even further, if he boarded the dogs and did not put them, I am not a fan of not having the dogs outside for a good amount of time each day. But even some other kenneling options, just take them for a walk a couple of times a day, would he be able to do that with that conditional use permit?
Well, it would still have to be approved because it's still, you know, the business, they're bringing them there. But, you know, if you wanted to set conditions on how that would operate, you have the ability to put conditions on how it operates, but it would still require approval.
But right now, the conditional use permit requires that the business be conducted inside.
Right, right, which I don't think is.
You can't actually put a condition on that because that is a part of the requirement of the ordinance.
Right.
But walking the dogs wouldn't be a condition on that. It would just be approval and then that's the only way he could get the dogs outside. Am I correct? This is not the solution I want, but am I correct on that point?
Yeah, I mean, to me, I don't, I, I still think we're looking at, there's a component of that business that requires the dogs to be outside. So you're going to have to amend the ordinance if you want to pursue that activity.
Because the state requires it. So the, the essence of what you're saying, at least what I hear, is that there could be no approval of a conditional use permit tonight.
Right, tonight you can vote to just deny the permit request. But like I said, if there is some interest in supporting that, we have to look at amending the ordinance. And then once the ordinance is amended, then we can still look at this specific use and place additional conditions on how it will operate. But we can't do that tonight.
So there is, okay, so, so the way our ordinance is written, we really can't, as, as Barb has indicated, there's a requirement relative to legality that requires the dogs to be outside. If we issued a conditional use permit, it would say that the business has to be conducted inside. They can't go outside, so we really can't issue that conditional use permit. We could table that. We could deny it. We could send folks, we could ask for a rewrite of the ordinance and then send it through that process. Does anybody else have comments?
I will emphasize again, these dogs need to be outside. And if that is an extension of the home, the conditional use has to emphasize that is an extension of the home. So I do have a concern until we get that clarified. A dog needs to be outside a certain amount of time every day. And like this gentleman here, I don't know a single dog that doesn't bark outside when they get a chance to be running around. So there's two things here that need to be looked at.
Is it possible to approve it with the conditions that dogs can be outside for X amount of hours? It's not possible to add that to it?
Not, not by our ordinance.
I mean, like I said, if we amend the ordinance to allow that, then we can put additional conditions on a future approval. But first, if you want to pursue that, we would have to amend the ordinance.
And, and I don't know, but I've had several calls and contacts since. Not necessarily about this kennel, but from my own district. People in my district who are calling and saying, if you approve this, does that mean somebody could start a kennel, in a, in a business kennel in our neighborhood? And the answer would be they could apply and, you know, so it's not, I want people to understand, we're not just talking about one. We're talking about, you know, it, it could be anywhere within the, anywhere within the town. And if you remove the option of having business outside as well as inside, that would, and I don't even know what we have for conditional use permits out now and how many of them are, are occupations that you wouldn't necessarily want outside. For instance, I'm wondering if you allowed a conditional use permit and I wanted to start a wood splitting business and now I don't have to do it in my house anymore, could I actually get a wood splitter and have a load of wood dumped and begin my wood splitting business? I think Dan would like it, but.
We haven't already.
We've already had that conversation.
I, I understand. Yeah, Dan's getting a little nervous over there because he's my neighbor. But, all right, so the, the question tonight is further tabling of a conditional use permit or denial of a conditional use permit? Because we really can't approve this particular conditional use permit.
I'm not comfortable with tabling it. It definitely sets a precedent of we pass the change in ordinance and then we assume we automatically bring it back. So I guess I would move to deny.
We have a motion to deny the conditional use permit. We have a second to the motion to deny the conditional use permit. We'll vote. Sackhausen?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, I would suggest if there's a desire to have an ordinance change, that you send some kind, I mean, there was a draft in your packet. If there's a desire to move forward with some ordinance changes and the types of home occupations and the home occupation kind of thing. And you can take a look at that ordinance. Would you please either email, well, you're going to be gone, right? Would you please email the council president or speak to her that you would like continuation of that discussion?
I will just say that I am interested in continuation of that discussion. I don't think that this is a bad idea all the way around. I think it gives us some.
So we have at least one person that's in, in favor of continuing a discussion about the way we do conditional use permits and home occupations.
I also think I noticed within the suggested piece that it has comments about no equipment can be outside. So that then would become a new hurdle. So just we'll look at that more carefully.
I just borrowed from some other communities and added to ours. So it's, it's definitely a rough draft that would have to receive some additional review before even got to the council.
Yeah, and the plan commission is currently reviewing ordinances for changes.
Right, and most of those have to do with conditional.
Conditional use permits.
So now would be an appropriate time to have some additional discussion if that is desired.
I just think it's important to recognize that if there's demand, then we should consider why is there demand? And if it, it seems like a good idea in a lot of ways, then it probably would be a good idea to repeat in other ways. And that's what people's fear is, like you mentioned, that it would be repeated over and over again and you'd have all these extra dog noise complaints. But I think that making sure that it's carefully written and maybe creating some.
Well, I, I think that the thing about ordinances is we don't create ordinances for one thing. We create, our, our job as a city council is policymaking. So it's all about the policy. It's not necessarily, it's unfortunately, people who come talk about it being about the people, but it's really about the policy. We're, we're really a policy-creating body. And so we probably need to review policy globally and not think of specific.
Tonight's a very relevant night to have this conversation when we're looking at the housing study.
Sure.
When you're talking about that and he's talking about what we need to create, I think of Main Street, right? It's where they were mixed use. We have residential above commercial. And it needs to be revamped to be the modern situation. But in a situation like this, it brings attention to the idea that we push some maybe unsavory or not exactly ideal, perfect things out of our residential neighborhoods, thinking not in my backyard. And then we lose other things that are important, like the sense of community when people come over to check out your puppies or asking your neighbor to help out with your job and take his, your dogs for a walk tonight. You know, that's important things that make your overall life experience valuable. And I think that it's important for us to consider how to keep that balanced, I guess.
You're missing the point on a commercial boarding kennel.
Jeff, we, we can't allow comments, well, we can't. I, I would suggest that you let us know in writing. We've taken a vote on this. The permit tonight has been denied. I've asked council members if they're interested in pursuing additional ordinance change to let us know. And I think that should end this discussion. That the conditional use permit has been denied.
Okay, so then I cannot apply for it again for another six months? Is that the deal?
That's correct, I believe. Yes.
You can talk to Joe about that afterward. But the conditional use permit has been denied. You can apply. Joe, what, you can tell the application procedure would be?
Yeah, I think he's got to wait six months.
Six months.
Unless that ordinance is changed, there would be no reason to reapply.
Right. And if, if the ordinance isn't changed, there would be no reason to reapply. And at this point in time, the, any ordinance changes will start first through plan commission, which is the general procedure.
And I would also mention that we are also reviewing chapter six, which is our animal control regulations. So there will be some additional opportunities for public input regarding kennels in that process.
Joe, can you?
It's actually relevant right now, but the question was asked, can we have just three days?
Just a minute. Joe, what are the particulars of a private kennel license?
So he's still allowed to have his own dogs up to 10, so that hasn't changed.
And his dogs are still allowed to have babies?
Correct. The, the issue that got denied was the, the. The, the issue that got denied was the, the business component of people coming to the property.
To the property.
Business. That's basically the issue that he ran into, that, that received the denial.
Okay.
And technically, his friends can have him watch their pets without payment and still being compliant at this moment.
So...
Fair?
So, I would suggest, Dan, that you, uh, contact Joe tomorrow if you have additional questions about what your current permit allows and doesn't allow. Okay. All right. Catherine, we have ordinance 1905 creating the formal committee for the Platteville Public Transportation Committee.
So, uh, last time I presented a little bit of information about this, uh, the committee has been an ad hoc committee since 2016. Considering the committee continues to meet to discuss bus routes, fares, and other operational details, staff recommends creating the formal committee, and at the February 14th meeting, the committee made a motion to recommend approving the draft ordinance to create the formal committee, and you have that attachment.
Okay, questions of Catherine, who is now staffing the, uh, Platteville Public Transportation Committee, which oversees the shared ride taxi and the bus service, our, our public transportation.
Well, I just have to bring everybody up to date. I was one of the few, or the person on the council at the time, that wanted the original conversation organized, because we were merging a bus system with the traditional taxi service, which are funded partially by the university and partially by the state. And I, first of all, I'm quite proud that the committee has moved to the point now that we'll make it permanent. But I also want to, uh, mention that we have a large population of people that simply no longer can drive, basically the elderly, and they have found that the support from the taxi service has been wonderful. I had a woman just mention today that she constantly says how very good the drivers have been, how very supportive they've been of her, and, um, they help her, they are on time, um, she's been very, um, excited about the program. So, I want to mention that I'm really encouraged that we're gonna have a committee or permanent committee for this, uh, transportation committee.
Any other comments? Otherwise, Barb, that almost sounded like a motion.
I move that we continue, that we move to a Platteville Public Transportation Committee.
And adopt ordinance 1905.
I didn't get that far, but yes, correct.
A second.
That's my motion.
And, and we have a second by Sina? We'll vote.
Sockhausen?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that's the end of our action items. We'll move on to information and discussion. We can have another discussion about a conditional use permit. Howard?
This one's mine. Um, this is a condition use permit, it's a little bit more straightforward, I think, because we've acted on this many times before. Um, Iverson Construction operates an asphalt plant in the Rock Quarry off Mineral Street. They have done this for many, many years. The only issue that's come up, um, has been a few occasions where we've received complaints about dust coming from the entrance driveway. So, a few years back, they've, uh, they paved, uh, the, the driveway, which was gravelled prior to that, and then have done spot spraying, um, as needed to control the dust, and that seems to have taken care of the problem. I don't recall we've, that we've got any complaints since at least the last six, seven years. Um, but other than that, it's basically the same request as previous years, so staff is in favor, uh, with the same conditions as prior years.
Any questions? Okay, no more questions, we'll move on to, uh, Item B, Contract 519, Camp Street Sidewalk.
Yes, um, this is a, uh, item that is in our Capitol Project's budget to, uh, complete a one and a half block portion of sidewalk on Camp Street between Lancaster and the existing sidewalk between Seventh and Elm Street. Uh, it was identified as a, uh, top priority connection on our original Safe Routes to Schools plan, allowing children to walk on sidewalks between Westview and El-, uh, and the middle school. Uh, the school district partnered with the city, and I have a typo in here, it's, uh, they, they funded 5,000 towards the project. Um, one of the things that we need to note is that based on citizen input, there will be a single crossing on the north side of the Camp and Lancaster intersection. If you look, I've included a map to kind of show you where that will take place. Um, we had four bidders, the low bidder being Lowinger Brothers, a Platteville contractor with extensive experience in sidewalk installation, um, and they, uh, bid under our, uh, budgeted project amount, so I will be recommending a word to Lowinger Brothers.
Okay, questions on the sidewalk for Camp Street that will connect Westview to the middle school? So, you would cross, your red line on your map, your crossing would be kind of middle blocks?
Well, what it, what it will do is, it will be directly across the street so that it connects directly to that sidewalk on the north side of Camp Street, west of Lancaster. Um, so that, uh, before, we were looking at crossing south, you know, in line with, with the other portion of Camp Street, and then children would have to cross, uh, Camp Street to get to the north side to get, uh, to that sidewalk. So, they would have two crossings, and now they only need to cross one street instead of two.
Any comments or questions on the Camp Street sidewalk?
Howard, this does not include any signage that we would have to put there?
Um, the signage would be done through the city, uh, as part of our normal city budget, same with, uh, same with the crosswalk marking.
Is there gonna be those flags at the crosswalk, like there is at the other spot?
We haven't discussed that yet. Uh, that would, that, that's not part of the budget, but that would be a, a separate discussion probably with the, uh, um, Community Safe Routes Committee.
Yeah, I would definitely push for it.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm just not sure if this is time appropriate, but is, is, uh, the round tree that rock, I said, the ridge avenue, is that on the radar with this project as like the next step or anything?
You mean for sidewalk on Ridge?
Yeah. Long, not really.
We haven't discussed anything about that?
I've gotten requests for it, and I thought, Camp Street coming, but, one thing at a time, but yeah, that's hit the radar, I guess, for me.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll have a discussion about sidewalks and maybe safer routes with, I know, we have a bike route on Ca...
On Ridge, but with the winter, the snow has been pretty much covering the bike route, and so the kids are just walking down the center of the street.
I believe that. Any other questions? Then we'll move on to the 2018 Annual Storm Water Report.
Okay. Um, we have an annual report requirement to submit, uh, a report on, on what we've done and how we are doing towards our, our, um, municipal separate storm wa-, storm sewer system permit, and, uh, it's required to be submitted, uh, by March 31st, and this is our, uh, uh, it's a requirement that the municipality's governing body have reviewed the contents of this report, so that's, that's what we're doing here.
Does anybody have any comments on our annual report under Municipal Separate Storm Sewer Sister, System MS4 Permit?
Yes, I have questions about, um, I think it's the second to the last page.
Okay.
And, uh, either tonight or next time, uh, could you specify what those costs are for? Uh, starts out with, um, I assume these are permit fees. Uh, the budget for the coming year is $2,000. Uh, storm water management, $1,000, pollution prevention, $55,000, storm water quality management, $30,000. So, I'd like to see, especially on one, two, the last three, uh, what is included in each one? So, you can provide that next time, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, that would be on page 11. It's actually the last page of the storm water permit where it talks about the budget, and, uh, Ken is asking specifically for, uh, some kind of, uh, understanding, uh, further specificity for pollution prevention of $55,415. I think it's 400, oh, $419, pardon me. Maybe I better put these on. And, uh, storm water quality management of $30,000. Those are the two, really, Ken? The $55,000 and the 30?
And then the, the $1,000 post-construction storm water management.
Oh, po-, okay, it's the one above it. Post-constru-, okay.
Sure.
The other one, okay, great. Any other questions on the storm sew-, the separate sore, storm sewer system permit? It's really rather hard to say that. Okay, then, uh, 2018 fiscal year to 2019 fiscal year budgeted carryovers.
Okay, so each year, we, um, uh, we have requests from departments to carry over unspent funds from prior year into the new year. Um, these would be revenues that, uh, were included in the, uh, prior year budget, but for one reason or another did not get expended in that year, and, um, and so oftentimes it will be for a special project of some kind. Um, I did hand out, uh, an amended, uh, staff note and schedule, um, to council members and staff. Uh, there were a couple of changes that came through after the packet went out. Um, so, the, the total amount, um, being requested to be carried over in the CIP fund is $241,625. Um, this is rather large compared to other years, and that's because of the excessive rain we received, um, in the fall of last year, and we're not able to complete some of our CIP projects. Uh, the general fund requested amount is $21,022, and, uh, I can just briefly review the attached schedule. Um, so the first item, uh, to be carried over is for the CIP, uh, for the City Hall stonework, uh, project, which was partially completed in 2018, uh, but there is, uh, some work to be finished in the spring of this year, and so the carryover request is for $5,047. Um, there were several components to the, uh, City Hall CIP budget from last year. Um, we did already carry over from the prior year, 2017, um, uh, in anticipation of some HVAC work. We've ended up, uh, postponing that HVAC work to, um, to this year, and, uh, we also had to buy a new boiler, and so those items combined, um, into that total line item for City Hall, uh, we have, uh, a remaining amount of $15,225 that, uh, we're requesting to carry over to help support the, um, City Hall remodel work this year. Uh, we just talked about the Camp Street sidewalk. Uh, in 2018, there was, um, uh, a CIP item, uh, for bike lanes. Uh, at that time, it was thought we may have a grant from, uh, the Platteville Community Fund. Um, in the end, in the 2019 budget, uh, this was, uh, transitioned to a sidewalk project, and, uh, there was a $5,000 grant, um, that, that will be, uh, received from the Platteville School District. Um, however, in 2018, we had levied $7,000 towards the bike lanes that are not being done, um, and so we are requesting to carry over that $7,000 towards the Camp Street sidewalk, and that was part of the 2019 CIP budget for paying for that particular project. Um, and then the, uh, basketball court, that was part of the Legion Park, um, uh, parking lot project. We had moved some funds into revenues in anticipation of that project, um, but since, uh, that project did not complete in 18, we're requesting to carry those, uh, revenues over. Those revenues came from the Clayton Trust, um, of course, the Art Hall or Event Center. Um, we had pledged $50,000, which we levied for in 18, and would like to carry that over for support in 19. Um, and park signs, uh, we had a project for, um, $10,000 of levy, um, for park signs, which did not complete in 18 also. Uh, and then finally, we have, um, uh, we have wheel tax funds, uh, funds collected in 18, and also, um, there was $20,000, um, of, uh, thin overlay that we wanted to carry over into 19, for a total of 143,000 to support the, um, the highway striping and thin overlay in 2019. So, those are the CIP projects. Um, before I go on to the general fund projects, is there any questions on the CIP project?
Can you tell me? I don't remember, um, an update on the bike lane. Where was that supposed to be, and why didn't it happen?
So, uh, the, the Camps...
That's probably better for me, I think.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, we had just talked about the Camp Street sidewalk. Basically, what had happened was, uh, through a process of public input and involvement, um, the residents along there felt that it was better to, uh, actually complete the sidewalk as, as a priority project, instead of putting bike lanes like we have on Ridge Avenue. So, we came back to the council as part of our 2019 budget discussion, and that's when we, you folks approved that as part of the, the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, and, and so then, uh, under the general fund, there's, uh, a few smaller projects there. I can entertain any questions if anybody has any on those general fund requests.
Anybody with questions? Okay, thank you. I believe that ends our public part. We do have a work session scheduled for stone, storm water management, and so at this point in time, um, we'll move to that, uh, work session, and go off camera.